Good evening, everyone. We're going to start off with county. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start off with county commissioners.
So I'd like to call to order the, where are we, January 25th, county commissioners meeting? This meeting is being audio and video recorded. Is there any public comment for items not on the agenda? You can.
This is for county or for select?
This is for the county. Sorry. Yep, that I should have said that more clearly. All right. I am not seeing any closed public hearing approval of the minutes and warrants. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor by roll call. Malcolm McNabb.
Hi.
Jason Bridges.
Hi.
Don Holgate.
I.
And I vote I. Okay, update on the petition for discontinuance of Baxter Road, and I'm going to ask attorney Marsh to lead us through this if she would.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so um, this is before you again this evening. Because we had initially received a petition from the Nantucket Land Council requesting a discontinuance of a portion of Baxter Road. At our, at your last meeting, we had reviewed the petition and I had presented an opinion in which I had determined that was that I thought that the opinion, that the petition was not properly addressed to the proper board. It should have been addressed to the county commissioners. And there were several other inconsistencies in the course of the petition. During your hearing, it also came out that the, there was an order of discontinuance that had been previously approved back in 2015. And there was a question raised as to whether that order of discontinuance was valid. There were some questions as to the notice requirements, and there were some questions as to the filing and and or recording of that order of discontinuance. So upon review of a number of documents in the town records, the minutes of meetings and searching for advertisements, I was able to determine fairly certain that the proper public notice pursuant to general laws, chapter 82, section 3, was not adhered to. There was no evidence that there was a a public notice given 15 days prior to the public hearing and a posting of that notice. The other thing that was very apparent was that the petition from the Board of Selectmen at that time was also voted upon and approved on the same day as was the discontinuance, the order of discontinuance by the county commissioners. And that would definitely provide evidence that there was not sufficient notice to be able to give public notice for this hearing. In order to have a proper public notice, you have to include the petition as part of that notice. And since the petition was approved the same day as the order of discontinuance, it's fairly apparent that there was not proper notice follow. So in addition, I could not find any evidence that the order of discontinuance, even if it was valid, had been properly filed, either in the town clerk's office or alternatively at the registry of deeds. So I came to the conclusion that the order of discontinuance that was executed in February 2015 by the county commissioners is not valid. And in the event that the county commissioners decide with the Board of Selectmen that perhaps they want to again, review this question and take it up, they would need to do so in order to create a a new order of discontinuance that would be valid.
Any questions from the board members?
So we understand now about the old discontinuance, that it's not valid, which was a question mark. So now that that's, now that's figured out.
Yep.
The next step is what do we do now? And then I'm not, I'm not sure. I hate to say I don't have enough information, but I'm not really sure what.
Yeah, if you, like I can outline a process if you just outline the process that would be before you, if you, if you decide to go forward on, on exploring the question of a discontinuance. So the, the step would be that you have to have a petition initiating the discontinuance. And the select board is a proper authority to be able to execute and initiate such a petition. You could, it could be done at a meeting that's, you know, a properly scheduled meeting of the, of the select board. So that is one approach. I mean, you know, private parties can initiate just orders of discontinuance, but in this case, the select board is certainly capable of doing that if it's something that they so choose. If the petition is initiated and voted upon by the select board, then the next step is to have notice of a public hearing by the county commissioners to hear the petition. And they can establish either a public hearing or a viewing of the site and and at that time, you can either vote at a, at the initial public hearing or at a a view and then a subsequent hearing that you either approve of or disapprove of the order of discontinuance. And when considering the order of discontinuance, the one thing is that you have to make sure that you are, that there is a finding that there is a public necessity, for public necessity and convenience, that the road be discontinued. And that's a standard that is set in the, in the statute. And then upon a vote by the county commissioners, I would recommend that the order of discontinuance, if it's favorable, would be to be recorded with the registry of deeds so that it is on public record.
Okay. And, and just the, the notice for the public hearing or viewing is a 15 day notice? Is that right?
Correct. It is a 15 day notice and, and then subsequently it's also posted.
Okay.
In two public places.
So, so for me, Malcolm, did you have any?
No, go ahead.
So, so for me, really, the question is, what is the, what is the definition of public necessity? And, and obviously, we don't really need to answer that question today unless we decide to pursue this further, I think. And then the other question is for me is there is, there was a petition filed by the land council that had some technical errors is the phrase that I would use in it. And were they to, to correct those technical errors, you know, addressing it to the proper commission and so on and so forth? What is the obligation of the county commissioners to take up that petition? Are we required to take it up or is that within our discretion?
Well, um, it's a good question. I mean, it's not clear. This is, this statute is, is not drafted very clearly, quite frankly. There are a lot of questions that are left open. However, I, you know, you can take it up at a meeting and not necessarily have a public hearing on it. You could address it similar to what you had done at your last meeting. It was not a public hearing. It was just, you know, a regular meeting. You could take it up at that time and determine whether you want to adjudicate this petition or not. And the other thing is if you determine that the select board wishes to take up a petition on its own, then a private party's petition really wouldn't be necessary. Because probably the quicker and easier thing would be to put this through with the select boards filing of a petition.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, of course, the land council could do what they want. It's this question of common convenience. I have to have a good argument. There is a common convenience and how you define that and what are the issues? I've talked to a lot of people about this and there are a lot of arguments for us doing that, but the legal requirement is common convenience. So I think if someone, other party supplied a petition, they would have to win that petition to find that better than has been done before.
The other thing that I find interesting is that when this, you know, the fact that this was done before and the circumstances under which it was executed while invalidly done, the process was, was attempted was in, I believe in the context of a, of a negotiated, as part of a negotiated MOU for part of the potential access to some of the properties out there off Baxter Road. And, and so to me, the definition of the convenience was part of that agreement. If, if that is correct. Yeah. Sorry, I'm not. So I, I certainly would need to understand the context more, the, the reason behind the petition. And certainly, for me, you know, we were upended with the change in, in SVPF's participation in this whole situation. And, and I feel as though there's plenty of uncertainties that we're hoping to iron out with other meetings and, and try to sort of figure out where we're going. So I'd be inclined to wait for us doing anything on this until we have a defined reason for doing so. Anybody, any other board members? I have a couple of public hands up. Vicky's hand is up.
So I just want to add, you're correct, Brooke, that in the context of the original order of discontinuance, it was in conjunction with the MOU that was originally negotiated, but it was also in relation to initiating a plan for the relocation of the roadway. And so at that time, it was discussed that the the thought of discontinuing this roadway by the county and putting this roadway now and would then be in the hands of the town. That was, made the process of possibly having to deal with the relocation quickly on an emergency basis. It, it made, it gave the, it gave the town a few more tools in the toolbox, if we want to say, to be able to protect the community quickly. And in addition to that, the town had at the next town meeting in 2015, there was a home loan petition, which was initiated and approved by the legislature, which authorized the county to convey the portions of Baxter Road to the town in the event that there was such a discontinuance. And then there was also a town meeting article, which was approved at town meeting, which would enable the town to be able to convey the fee or other lesser interests to the necessary parties in order to be able to effectuate a possible relocation of Baxter Road. So that was, that was the context of the discontinuance. There were a few different initiatives that were done by the town at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask you just to repeat one thing? So original logic was to give us time to work rapidly. Because obviously, we're going to probably someday work a lot quicker than we want to. But we do have a legislative mandate. We, we can take the, the road based on the state. There was a warrant?
I'm going to try to repeat what Vicky said, and she can tell me if I've got it right. The latter half of the puzzle is in place. The first step is not in place. So this would be going back and doing the first step, which is the discontinuance with, that then puts it in the hands of the select board, who already has the authority to convey the road, correct, Vicky?
Um, so what would happen is we need to go back, you're correct, and do the first step, which would be the discontinuance. And then as a result of the discontinuance and the legislative authority, the county would then have the authority to be able to convey the fee in the road. And, and it's a fee taking, by the way. So it's the fee in the road, not just easement rights in the road that would be transferred. And the fee would then be transferred to the town. And then as a result of the art, warrant article that was approved at town meeting, the town would also have the right to be able to convey either fee interests or lesser interests such as easements to abutters and other parties that required access over what was left of Baxter Road if it, you know, had to be closed or wrote it.
So we could do a discontinuance, but we wouldn't necessarily have to enforce it immediately. So we'd have that in our pocket as another tool.
So you could do the discontinuance. And then what happens automatically by law is that there is, the road becomes a townway. There is not an actual conveyance at that time, but the county is authorized to convey it. So yes, you can do the discontinuance. The road then is, is determined to be a townway. The town, it's a public way still, but it's a townway and not a county way. And, and then at a later date, if the town determines that they either need to convey interests in the road or easements in the road, they have the ability, they have the authority to be able to do that. So that's. To go to a separate town meeting to get authority.
At first glance and thinking about it for two minutes, that sounds like a reasonable tool for us to have.
And, and just to be clear, Vicky, we would have to do a discontinuance to move into those other steps.
Um, yes, I would recommend that you do a discontinuance as the first step. And then we actually have the, you know, the ability to move to the others. But if, I just want to make clear that once you do the discontinuance, the way becomes a townway. It doesn't, it doesn't become a private way, which I think some parties feel that's what, that will, that's what will happen. It does remain a public way owned by the town, maintained by the town.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to public comment. Rick Atherton?
Brooke, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I appreciate attorney Marsh's comments and her explanation in the package for the county commissioners. I also went back and tried to review the public documents readily available, the minutes of the meetings referred to and so forth. I think the, the one item that still isn't totally clear to me, and I think it's worth clarifying for everybody, my expectation is that when a board I serve on acts and takes an action, that action is followed up on and becomes effective unless someone reports back to the board and says, oh, by the way, there were these issues and it's not effective. And I, I just don't recall that happening. And it seems to me in this situation, all that's become clear now. But for the past several years, it was never mentioned that I recall that the action approved at those meetings were not effective. So if, if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be corrected, but I think we deserve to know what that situation was. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Emily Malden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Emily Malden for the Nantucket Land Council. I just wanted to thank you again for having this on the agenda for additional update and discussion and appreciate the clarification on the history of the 2015 vote and where that ultimately ended up. We have been working on and have revised our petition for the discontinuance, but have held on to it and have not resubmitted it at this time because certainly since the last, your last meeting, when this was discussed, there have been some significant changes and given that change in landscape and different circumstances and the withdrawal of the GeoTube expansion project, we have decided to hold off and understand that there's a, a joint meeting planned for the select board and conservation commission to continue to discuss next steps and, and strategy going forward. And I believe it's appropriate for that to happen. Certainly, again, appreciate discussion of this as a tool and will look forward to future discussions as to how it can be used. And again, we'll, we'll hold off on resubmitting our petition until some future plans and strategy becomes a little bit more clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Any other comments from my board here?
I think waiting. I also would like to have Matt weigh in on this with his experience. And if land council's holding off, and I, I feel like I understand it, but I'm not sure if I understand the long term. You know, Vicky did a great job of explaining the process, but the why I need to dig into a little more. And maybe we're not ready for that.
And what are the consequences budget wise to it being a county way instead of a town way and, and those kind of questions? But, but I do think the next step is a select board step. So as Chair of County Commissioners, I would ask the Chair of the Select Board if perhaps this could go on a future agenda for the select board to determine whether we would like to petition ourselves as the county commissioners to move forward with the discontinuance with a reason of, you know, a good logic behind the request. And I think working with land council on that so that we're, you know, coordinating toward a common end might make sense too. So with that, if there aren't any other comments, we can move forward. Is that? Okay, all right, great. So the next item on the agenda is a request for acceptance of a letter of intent with Camp Richard Campers Association for use of private property for the Lover's Lane side path. Vicky, are you on for this again?
No, I am.
Up Ken.
Yes. Good, good afternoon. This is a continuation of a process that you've been involved with over the last little while as we work to fix the side path, the multi-use path to the, on the left-hand side of Lover's Lane as you're going out towards Old South Road. The first step was what you approved about several meetings ago where we, where we approved, where we approved, you approved and executed the agreement with the state relative to the ability for the, us to have the opportunity to do this on the portion that the state owns. This next section is for the, where the, the stage portion ends sort of in the parking area where the disc golf is. And this has been reviewed by the engineers, GPI, who are doing overseeing the entire project for the town and have recommended that this is a, an appropriate solution and that we accept the grant of the permanent and temporary easement. And once that's done, we will, the town will take on the additional steps as part of the overall process as outlined in there, which are fairly straightforward and just are really dealing with, dealing with the maintenance of the physical aspect of the land. So be happy to answer any questions. And our recommendation is based on the work, that the amount of time that we spent doing this and the fact that it's moving forward and that it's approved by all of the engineers that are involved, we recommend that you accept the the two easements on behalf of the town.
Any questions from the commissioners? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Malcolm?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Don?
I.
And I vote I. Okay, so that passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is review and adoption of the fiscal year 24 county budget. Mr. Turbot?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we're here to present the fiscal 24 county budget recommendations. Next slide, Erica, please. So just for everybody's refreshing, since we do this once a year, the county is made up of three distinct agencies within it, the county administration, and then the registry of deeds, which is administration and deeds excise. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. The revenue sources are from the town assessment, deeds excise revenue, recording fees, the corrections deed excise, which is a $250,000 contribution towards the debt service for the public safety facility. And should revenues not meet the projected expenses, depending on the usage, we could either utilize registry of deeds, excise fund balance and/or the county fund balance. Excellent. Projected revenue is broken out for, for the commissioners to see the town assessment is $179,075. Deeds excise receipts are projected to be $584,325, $350,625 from county administration and registry of deeds, $233,750. Recording fees, we're projecting at $171,500. And then as noted, the corrections deed excise of $250,000. We're projecting, if everything goes according to plan, that the county will bring in from all sources, $1,184,950. So this county funding requirement, also known as maintenance of effort, really relates to the assessment that the town provides. By law, we must provide a certain amount of non-deeds excise revenue to the registry, which is the town assessment. The amount increases by two and a half percent per year. The calculation, the basis for that, for fiscal 24 county funding requirement, the basis was 363,574, of which we then subtract out the, the, can you go back one slide, Erica, so I can remember correctly? No, that's my fault, actually. We then take out the recording fees to net to the actual amount of the town assessment. Next slide, please. Next slide. Projected expenses, county administration, and then the, the next slide, after we get through this one, you'll see that county administration, which has no employees, mainly just expenses related to legal and professional services, we're recommending $254,000, excuse me, $984 registry of deeds, where the three full-time employees reside, along with additional administrative expenses and any other deed excise or special projects that the registrar may undertake, $547,580. And then the accompanying expense for the debt service for the public safety facility, $250,000. Total projected expenses, $1,056,564. The last slide that we have in the presentation simply compares last year's budget to the projected fiscal 24 budget. It's really much smaller to make that a little larger for next year. As you'll see, county administration is recommended to stay level funded at $258,984. Registry of deeds for fiscal 24 is a slight increase mainly driven by payroll and, and benefit costs. And then again, the, and then $250,000 for the public safety facility, all told, $1,056,564 versus $1,032,633 last year.
Any questions from the board? My motion?
Move to adopt.
All those in favor? Malcolm?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Don?
I.
And I vote I. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I just wanted to recognize the register of deeds, Jen Ferreira. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments or reports from the commissioners? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I can.
All those in favor by roll call? Don?
I.
Jason?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
And the chair votes I.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, we'll call the select board meeting for January 25th to order. No changes to the agenda that I'm aware of. Announcements?
Just review of applications to the council on aging. Are those? In accordance with your policy, while that's coming up, this is a meeting at which the names of the applicants for this committee are noted. They'll be noted again next week, and then the board will make appointments and have applicant introductions on Wednesday, February 8th. So the, there are three vacancies, but we have two applicants right now, Erin Lynch and Abigail Camp.
I will note that we had four people ask for applications, but only the two submitted, so.
Okay, any select word announcements and comments to start off with? Brooke?
I wanted to talk a little bit, I attended the Mass Municipal, Municipal Association Conference and Trade Show this past weekend. And the town was represented by a select board member, Don Holgate. a select board member, Don Holgate, town manager, the assistant town managers, Rick Sears and Greg Tivnan and Brian Turbot, Finance Director. And I didn't miss anyone, did I? And I was really amazed at the amount of information that was put forth and available to us. And I think we did a good job of dividing and conquering and covering as many of the informational seminars as we could as a group. And I just, I wanted to note that it was really interesting for me as a new select board member to be in a room with hundreds of people who are working hard to accomplish things at the municipal level. And to see how much energy goes in Commonwealth wide to making our communities run. And I also was impressed that in a lot of conversations with other attendees, Nantucket is ahead of the curve on a lot of things, close to resilience, housing. Sometimes we forget that we're doing well in, in, when we see the things that are, that we're playing catch-up on or that we're trying to get to. And so I really wanted to, to say that out loud. And I also wanted to say that I had, we had the opportunity to hear both the new governor and lieutenant governor twice with the lieutenant governor speak, and both of them paid a lot of attention to the housing as a Commonwealth wide issue and their support for initiatives, a variety of initiatives across the Commonwealth. And I had the opportunity to ask Lieutenant Governor about our home rule petition for a transfer fee for housing. And she reiterated the government, governor's remarks from last week, the weekend before, which was that they support local options for funding for housing. And so it feels good to have a stated front of house policy from the governor and lieutenant governor on supporting housing initiatives across the Commonwealth, so.
Did you say that we'll hold you to that?
I didn't have an opportunity for a follow-up. I really wanted to, but I didn't get the chance.
Malcolm, anything for you? I just had one quick comment. I was able to have, get a tour of the warming place, which is a, which is a place where those who, who are homeless or do not typically have a home can go and warm up and have food and find other resources, any resources they need. And I was invited in just to come look at their procedures and their policies and they've got a full book and it's really thought out. And I just wanted to send, you know, some shout-outs to the many, many, many people who are volunteering to, to make this happen. Most people don't know that we have homeless here. Homeless comes in a lot of different forms. They could be living in their car for a couple of weeks when they're in between, or they could just be homeless for, for 20 years. And, and they're here. And so it's, it's a very difficult thing to address with liability and, but they're, they've worked through a lot and there's more that they're doing. And so I just wanted to, to say thank you. It's a great collaborative movement. And to meet a very serious demand, especially this time of year, especially when it gets cold out. And there are guest houses that have stepped up and helped out during very, you know, cold times. And I want to just, I don't want to name anyone, but just want to really thank everyone involved who's helping in that, in that area. I was very impressed. Good. If there's nothing else, we, there's no follow-up comments from prior select board meetings. Any public comment tonight that's not on our agenda? Go.
Hey, how we doing? My name is Joseph Manella. I am here to talk about the fertilizer ban article from last time, Article 79. I was the one that wrote it. I've been following it through the State House and it's been moving along and it's been getting favorable reviews from, I got a favorable review from the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Agriculture. That was during the 192nd legislative session and they didn't get a chance to get it through like the third day or the third vote or something like that. And so I reached out to them. I was trying to figure out what's going on with it. And they told me that to contact the sponsors, which were Dylan Fernandez and Senator Sire Sears. And so then they have to refile it. So then I contacted them and asked them to refile it as a citizen. And they said that the town leadership has to ask them to refile it. So I'm here asking you guys to please reach out to them and ask them to refile it. And they also said that Senator Sears' office said that he encouraged Nantucket to pursue the ban. He said that the new governor, new administration are likely to be more friendly to this bill. They said that more and more people, including some large landscaping companies, are starting to realize that it would, that dumping all these chemicals on law is not a good thing. They also said that the state looks to Nantucket to be a leader in many of these initiatives. They say the housing bank bill, which the state has finally started to come around to. They also said this week we'll guess the grease. So I'm here asking you guys to please reach out to them and refile it. And then it was also brought to my attention that Article 85 is another kind of home rule petition regulating the application of fertilizer on the island. And that's basically just the same amendment that the FinCom put in last year that got voted down at town meeting. So I don't understand what Article 85 had, like Article 85 already got voted down at town meeting. Bobby DiCosta stood up, gave like a very impassioned speech and then Article 79 from last year got passed by vote of three to one. It was basically 300 to 100. So I'm hoping that you guys can ask the state to refile. It's Bill S. 3101. And it's just, you know, if, even if 85 gets passed, then it's going to happen in May. It's just, it's just not going to, it just, the ball needs to be rolling, you know, so I'm hoping you guys can please reach out to Representative Fernandez, Senator Sire Sears, and ask them to refile for us.
Thank you, Joe.
Procedure wise, why that's, can we discuss that when we talk about the warrants?
We could. Yeah, not here, but yeah, we, later in this.
That's what I, just want to make sure.
Yeah. Any other comments tonight that's not on the agenda? Okay, there's no new business. Making a motion for approval minutes for January 18th and the payroll warrants for January 22nd?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I add in Treasury warrants for January 25th. Sorry. All three of those.
So move for all three.
By roll call, Brooke?
Aye.
Malcolm? Don?
Aye.
And Jason, aye. Those three pass. Citizen Department Committee requests, we have Capital Program Committee Review of FY24 Capital Program Committee Report. We have Mr. Welch here. Hey, Stephen?
Hey, Jason. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Stephen Welch, here at the Capital Program Committee. Nice to see you all. Here tonight to provide a summary of the Capital Program Committee's fiscal year 24 report. Erica, would you mind pulling up the the packet item?
Give me one sec.
Yep, sure. And if you could go to the introduction page, that'd be super. Just let it sit for a minute. Great, thanks. Before we start, I'd like to take a quick moment to identify the Capital Program Committee members and to thank them for their service. Our members are Richard Hussey, Vice Chair, Jill Beath, FinCom Rep, Jason Bridges, our Select Board Rep, Barry Rector, who's our NPDC rep, Peter Kaiser, who's a member at large, Kristy Kickem, Kickem, also a member at large, and myself, a member at large, serving as Chair. It's a devoted bunch. They invest many hours contemplating the intricacies and details of our town's capital investments. So I give them a tip of the hat and much thanks. Also take a quick moment to thank our town manager, Libby, our finance director, Brian, and our assistant finance director, Sue Carmel. They're integral to our process and Sue newly involved this year is an essential, an essential part of our week-to-week progress. If we could go through the, we could kind of go through page by page. So this page represents a summary of the requests by General Fund and Enterprise. General Fund, we've broken these down into departments. The total is of the dollar amount of the request is 47.7, 45.7 million. Sorry, a little dyslexia tonight. Our enterprise accounts are total 63.25 million. We had, I believe, towards the top of the sheet, Erica, I think there were 59 requests totaling 112 and a little more than a half million of those Capcom made recommendations for 54 requests totaling basically 109 million. This sheet is reflected in detail in the appendices. It's Appendix A. If we could go to the next sheet, please. So this is the same information in terms of the dollar amounts presented a different way. These are presented the way that they'll show up at town meeting. Broken down by general fund and enterprise account. Borrowing, capital exclusion, debt exclusions, federal grants, free cash to raise and appropriate and state grants. The totals work out to be the same per each general fund and enterprise account. Enterprise accounts breaks down to borrowing, free cash and retained earnings this year. Next sheet, please. By the way, that information is shown in detail in the Appendix B. And then there is a glossary, which is Appendix F, that gives you a breakdown of what, what those funding sources mean if you're not familiar with municipal finance terms. This one is just always a little interesting. These are requests greater than a million dollars, broken out into general fund and enterprise accounts. We've had this, a request for this over the last several years from different members of the FinCom and otherwise. So we, we just make this a mainstay in our report. Next sheet. This is the projected cost of borrowing impacts. This is for capital exclusions, debt exclusions. And we total those out, we break those down as a projected increase for residential, commercial, industrial and open space. And then we list out our assumptions, so you'll know what we're looking at there. Excuse me, the appendix that kind of correlates with this is Appendix D. And that's a history of the town's tax rate by those categories, residential, commercial and so on. This page covers basically a water sewer and airport and provides links for their ratepayer impacts. Their ratepayer fee structure and fees. And it gives a brief explanation of how they tie into the capital asset and capital, capital investments. Debt service in principle gets into when they're available amortization tables for anyone who's interested in that level of detail and when available, we would insert an Earl into the report. And the next few, the next couple of pages are statement of procedures. I'd encourage folks to read these. I'm certainly not going to get into this tonight. I know you've got the town warrant coming up and other matters. But this goes through and outlines what capital program does on an annual basis, when we start, how we accomplish the goals we set out, what those goals are and so on and so forth. I think you've gone down two or maybe three pages, Erica. Yeah, one more. These are procedural recommendations. We, you know, have a summary of what we see on the ground and different aspects of how the program might be managed. We're going to be doing a review of these this year with, I believe, Finance Department and a representative of the town administration and kind of fine tune and see what of these have been, you know, accomplished sufficiently to not be carried into future years and whether any of these are recommendations we might want to change. So you can keep on there. And the next up should be, yeah, there's quite a few on the procedural recommendations. So this is Appendix A. It's in a PDF format on the town's webpage for the Capital Program Committee. I certainly wouldn't advise anyone to try and read these types of things without a PDF. You can blow up unless you're going to print it on an 11 by 17 piece of paper. Again, these are the 59 requests and on the right-hand side is the request amount. And on the furthest right-hand column is the capital program recommended outlay. And then there's some flip notes and whatnot that relate to each of them. Appendix B, I previously mentioned, breaks it down by funding source. This gives you the detail behind the narrative summary, the, the summary and the narrative body of the report. This is Appendix C, appropriations and expenditures to date. So this is a, just a quick presentation of requests, current year requests that had prior appropriation, what those dollar amounts were, what the expenditures were to date and what the balance is. So really just informational. Appendix D, I mentioned, this is the town's tax rate history. This is the capital request form that the department heads fill out. There's a ton of information. It goes directly into a database, eliminates kind of the human error side of things and redundancy and replication. It makes it a lot easier for, I think, town manager, finance and certainly Capcom to review. And then this is Appendix F, which is the typical mass municipal capital funding sources. It's just a glossary in effect. And that is it? Any questions?
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? Malcolm?
I'm going to do what I hate to do and that bring things up that I don't, I have an answer for or complaints. In other words, it seems to me we have an awful lot of debt. And particularly this line debt exclusion, for example, 24 million. I was just wondering what our total debt is. In other words, I've seen borrowing numbers and debts for next fiscal year. What is our present overall debt in the whole town budget? Just curious.
I would actually have to ask Brian Turbot to answer that. We don't typically track the total overall in such a way that I would have that information at my fingertips.
I think Brian probably has it in his head to the $10.
I'm sure he does.
He doesn't have it to the penny, unfortunately, but it, it's right around, I think, 380 million that has been permanently borrowed at this point and is outstanding. Between both general fund and enterprise funds, that's not solely the general fund. That's everything in, in total. But I would note, I mean, the, the town is A, not anywhere near its actual borrowing capacity as prescribed under the statutes and mass general law. And B, when the rating agencies look at the amount of outstanding debt to the equalized value, we rank as in, in the highest category possible. So just to give you a little context to what that, how that compares to equalized value. And, and that's one of the things that the rating agencies look at when they do this to see whether we're still credit, whether or not.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry. I just wanted to comment, if I may, on the debt, the term debt exclusion in our report is actually a municipal term. And that refers to an exclusion that is temporary in basis. It isn't permanent, like a two and a half percent override. It, it just, it is in play until the particular debt for the particular capital asset is paid off. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Malcolm?
Yeah, again, I have no, to me, that just sounds an awful lot, too much debt. Even though we have good ratings and it's easy to borrow. That bothers me, but I have no solution, so I should not speak. Just my opinion.
Did you, you had two things, a couple of things?
Uh, no, that's enough.
Okay. I, every year, I like to remind everyone the process that Capital Program Committee goes through and town admin and the finance department. I might not have this correct, but Stephen, we, we start in August and wrap everything up in kind of December, early January. It's a, it's a process. We look at everything, but before it even gets to us, Libby, you can correct me. But it goes through town admin, it goes through the finance department, you work with each department before it even comes to Capital Program Committee. Is that right? Yeah. So it, it's, it's a big process that, that, because soon as we're done with this town meeting, it's already, it kind of already starts again. And I, I say that because a lot of times we, we go to town meeting, we look at it and we're like, well, this doesn't make any sense. $75,000 for walkie-talkies for the school, but it's been vetted 16 times in the Capital Program Committee. sixteen times in the Capital Program Committee. I've been on it for, I think, five years now with you, Stephen. We've gotten better and better and better to ask questions and really understanding the need for it. So am I not, people still have the right to to question it, but I want to make sure people know that it's vetted through many, many different filters. I get that right, Stephen?
Yeah, right on. You know, I, the only thing I would add is, you know, keep in mind, it's a citizen taxpayer committee. We all have a vested interest in the community doing well. It's individuals who have financial business or, you know, real community experience. So it gives, it gives citizens an opportunity to kind of weigh in, evaluate prior to town meeting and make a recommendation. So I think it adds to the process. And more so is the, these capital requests become more complex. As we become more complex, I think select board member Brooke Moore mentioned how Nantucket is really kind of ahead of the curve in a lot of things. I'd like to think that capital program, although not from the policy leadership point, but from the, you know, reviewing and helping to make capital investments beneficial has helped overall. So just a quick comment.
Thanks, Stephen. Can we go to Rick, Rick Atherton?
Jason, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead, Rick. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Question, I guess, for you or for Stephen Welsh.
I think there's some feedback, Rick, in there. Here we go, that's better.
I think there was, my apologies, is this better?
Yep, that's better, go ahead. Yep, that's better. If you can hear us, you can go ahead. Is he on, Erica? Okay. Rick, can you hear me?
Jason, is this better?
I can hear you, can you hear us?
Yeah, so my my apologies, that was my problem. I would just like to try to ask you and or Steve on the capital program agenda, the materials that are reviewed by the committee at their meetings. I think they're all sort of public documents, and I really appreciate the select board's package of materials. I don't find those same package of materials as readily available for our committee meetings. And if they are on the Capital Program Committee and I've missed them, I apologize. But I would encourage the material you review, Steve, to be available to the public before the meeting and at the very least after the meeting, so they can understand the material you're reviewing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, if I may, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we currently what I just, I'll explain quickly, but it sounds like something we might be able to address. Currently, what happens is supplemental information, backup details, just quite a bit of information is uploaded into the database. So, you know, we'll have to discuss as a committee and with the finance department, how something might be put together so that it could be published to the site more like the select board packet. I don't know the practicalities of that, so I don't want to, I don't want to speak to it more directly than just kind of explaining what happens now. Rick, I thought you were going to ask me about about potholes. You you asked me about those a lot. I was going to send it to the DPW. But thank you, that's, I think, a really helpful and constructive question.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Stephen. Thanks for all the work.
Thank you, team effort. We really appreciate the support. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Town managers' report.
Thank you. First off, we have review of proposed fiscal twenty twenty four enterprise fund budgets. We did a couple last week and we have the remainder this week, starting with our island home. And I think we have Bob Eisenstein on as, oh, and Peter is here as well, Peter Holden from Island Home and Brian as supplementary backup.
Thanks, Frank. Okay, I'm going to try this. Bob, are you on?
I am, can you hear me?
Thanks, so I got the support in front of me and the support back to me. Okay, so Bob, can you drill down from the big picture and I'll pick up in the back end of it?
Yeah, what I'd like to do first, Erica, is if you can go to the slide of the graphs, we may as well, let's go to the big picture first. If you guys can hear me okay, I'm going to give you the general big picture overview. Yeah, right there is fine. And then Peter's going to go back and talk about some of the specific initiatives and goals. So as you can see from, by the way, we did a lot of good work with both Brian and Libby to vet out this budget. So I think we've, it's a team effort. We looked at expenses line by line. We've also looked at the revenue. So starting with expenses, if you you can see, if you click on two thousand and twenty three first, you can see that over two thousand twenty four, over two thousand and twenty three is an increase of two hundred and twenty four thousand eight hundred and seventy seven on the overall operating budget. And there are several reasons for that. They're actually good reasons. We have an increase in occupancy and census already. And Peter, I think, is going to address that. I think we're at thirty nine going to forty right now. So anytime you increase volume, obviously, you're going to have an increase in the variable costs such as staffing, food, and those items. So that's not really a bad increase considering the census is going up. However, if you can go to the next slide, we can show you that the difference in expenses, the payroll dollars, interestingly enough, have gone down about six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars year over year. And there will be a subsequent increase. We've done a lot of work at putting the money in the right bucket. So what we've done is we've transferred money out of payroll, but we put those dollars into what's called professional services. So you'll see about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in professional services. That's the internal numbers. And that's because frankly, there's a staffing crisis, as you all know, all over the state and all over the country in terms of healthcare, nursing staff specifically. So we've had to hire, supplant the pay, the regular full time complement that we have in the building in order to to meet the demands of the increased census. And those dollars are unfortunately higher dollars as well. Included in that increase of professional services is also other contracted services, again, that we needed to go outside to hire. So the total dollar amount, of course, going over to by two hundred and twenty four, but internally, you'll see that change between a decrease in payroll and a subsequent increase in professional services. The next slide. This is the, this is what I just referred to, you know, unless there's questions, we don't necessarily go into detail. But this shows you the the difference between the decrease in payroll dollars on that first line under payroll and the subsequent increase under professional services. And that's what I just explained. At the bottom, total dollar difference. The the next budget, the good news is on the revenue side. You can go to, you may to to all review that. If there's any questions, please let me know. On the our island home revenue side, the good news there is we're we're in, we're projecting an increase in revenue starting July one of two thousand and twenty three, straight through to June thirtieth of twenty four by about one point four million dollars. We're already seeing these increases, and Peter's going to talk about this a little bit. The areas that we've seen an increase, fortunately, under Medicaid, the state has increased our rates by twenty two dollars a day. We, through the good work of Peter and his team at the facility, we've actually seen an increase of almost seventy four dollars a day on Medicaid, that's Mass Health. We're also looking to increase Medicare revenue through bringing more patients in from off island. And I think Peter's going to talk about it. We've already had, I think, one one admission just came in on Monday from a nursing home in Peabody. And we have another person coming in, I think, this week as well. So our goal is to beef up revenue to offset any of the increases in expenses. And now, having given you the big picture, I'll turn it back to to Peter, who I think is going to go back to the first slide. Peter, take it away.
I'm going to go back to the, to where it says goals. I might just, if you guys bear with me on this page, I'll pick up, I could pick up to the next page of how this is related. To go first goal, we're going to do is try to reduce, we will reduce the gap between subsidies from the town and the revenue gain from OIH. And then moving on to goal two, we'll include the quality mix, which means increase the percentage of Medicare and private pay revenue to get the higher dollar per resident. Then moving on to goal three, we'll continue to work closely with OIH and the town to reduce the expenditures in the future in preparation of the opening of the new facility. And as we move down to go for capital projects to include the renovation of the West Wing Shower Room and installation of door windows, these ones are secured for these projects. And goal five, provide education and training for licensed staff for IV antibiotics and other more acute medical procedures. Because to increase the Medicare revenue, we have to educate our current nurses into more to be able to handle the higher acuties expected going forward. And we're already seeing that pressure on us already. And moving on to goal six, decrease utilization of travel missing staff by hiring permanent licensed nurses. And going down to goal seven, develop promotional educational opportunities for CNA staff to encourage retention. On the mainland, you see a lot more of that, of the CNA's moving on to LPNs and RNs. We actually have that situation going on in Island Home with the nurses from LPN to an RN. We would like to increase the CNA's to become into an LPN. That would help us eliminate some of the traveling positions. And moving on to goal eight, provide five days a week skilled therapy to attract more Medicare admissions and increase overall revenue. Goal nine, maximize the Medicaid reimbursement through education and training of staff on clinical documentation. Now, if we go to the next one, all these initiatives that have been handed to me from above, we've already put in place, like because of ENF coming into the building, we have improved the Medicaid reimbursement rate by an average of seventy four dollars per day. Now, we started December twenty second. So, and this was done through education of our CNA's and nursing and documentations, which they did not have. Also, the oversight of one of Bob's counterparts that are continuously monitoring this. So this is not including the additional atoms of the twenty two dollars per day that the state just gave us. So what I'm about to say to you is my little analysis is that as of today, right, we have twenty five Medicaid in house and three Medicaid pending. So we take that twenty eight Medicare, Medicaid people, residents, and just use the seventy four dollars and not include the additional twenty two dollars a day that the state just awarded us, that comes out to two thousand and ninety one dollars a day. That's additional revenue per day of two thousand ninety one. If you take that out over a year, that is seven hundred and sixty three thousand four hundred and thirty four. That's not including the twenty two dollars additional day per resident on Medicaid. So that's a huge, that's a huge increase due to the education and the documentation of the building. And then we're moving on to the initiative two. We have increased the census per year in of twenty twenty two, which was in December, of thirty seven residents per day. Currently, we're running at thirty nine, it would have been forty, but currently we're at thirty nine. And then if you just take those two additional residents, and we just take the average of the Medicaid rate, we're not looking at the private rate of two eight of five eighty, we're not looking at the Medicare rate, which is higher or sometimes lower. We're just going to take the average Medicaid rate, and that's two hundred and sixty nine dollars and seventy four cents a day. Just these two additional residents, right? That adds five hundred and thirty nine dollars a day, which comes out to an additional one hundred and ninety six thousand nine hundred dollars a year. Just two additional. And then I got my directives to make that number for the year forty two. Okay, running total. Now, we filled all the vacant nursing positions with new travel nursing agency contracts. What that has happened, though, yes, that's a higher cost, but right now is bringing a lot more stability to the floor of running and caring for the residents. They're coming in with more experience, and they have a lot higher level of SNF experience from the mainland. And now they're over on the island currently. But our goal is still to, through attrition, is to bring in more permanent town employees and less travel going forward. Okay, also, ENF has consolidated four previous contracts into one main provider for better efficiencies, and to continue to streamline it and to continue to consolidate this. Also, considering one of our goals, we've, ENF has signed a new therapy contract along with the OIH. We have brought in a new physical OT and speech therapy vendor into the building, which is huge. This provider is very well experienced. I know about them from the mainland. They have a great reputation. They're actually, the main focus is on SNFs. So the advantages of this due to the previous vendor, which they were great, and they are still great, but they have more of a sense of SNF regulations, how to bring increased revenue and how to market it. And that's a proven fact. I've talked to other administrators and other buildings in this new vendor that we have coming in, this therapy. But the most exciting part of it, they're actually charging half of what per hour what the previous vendor was. Over the year, that's going to be huge. Also, they have a much larger staff and resource, and we'll be able to provide five times, five times a week, six times a week in all areas of OTPT. So thus, we can increase our Medicare coverage, because we have, sometimes we're limited in what we can bring in. If we don't have the rehab staff to support the new Medicare people we're coming in, we've already witnessed that because, you know, there's a certain constraint of resources on the island. But with this new vendor, I'm pretty excited about it. And the cost is half of that per hour. Those are previous vendor. Moving on, we are establishing work groups to discuss the plans for the new building, which including the ROH, our staff at OIH, they're really excited about it. They have a list of ideas they want to put into the drawings. They have a list of ideas, what they expect and what would make it the building more presentable and more efficient in resident care. And moving on to infection control and COVID compliance, we do have an excellent record of that so far. But DPH, CMS, and other agencies, they're constantly changing the bar. So we have to rely on continuing education from ENF to continue educating us on all these constant changes. And going back to the census increase, back in December of twenty one, our running census was twenty nine. If you come up to this past December, we're up to thirty seven. If you go back in January of twenty two, our census was thirty. And right now, our census is running at thirty nine. Okay. And Bob, that's all I have to say. Brian, do you have anything else? Thank you. Bob?
No, thank you very much, and I appreciate you're inviting us to the select board. Nice to see you, Jason.
I think one thing that is really important to note, Mr. Chair, is that with the help of Bob and Peter and the additional revenue that we're able to bring in, we actually were able to remove the need for any potential utilization of retained earnings at town meeting. So the budget will be solely funded by operational revenues and then the override that was passed, which is what we've been working very hard to attain. So I want to thank everybody involved for all their diligence and hard work in reviewing this.
Congratulations, that hasn't happened in a while. I I have one question for you, Peter. Goal number nine, I didn't understand the, for more Medicaid reimbursements, does that, does that mean if you get more training, reimbursements go up? Or I wasn't sure.
Okay, so what it says, maximize Medicaid reimbursement through education and training of staff and clinical documentation. When we first got into the OIH facility, the documentation on the floor, there was a lot of, there was a lot of holes in it, I want to say, but it was also that they were not trying, they just not have the education of what to look for, how to document it, what was able to be documented. A lot of these, well, we couldn't document it, but then ENF came in and educated the staff, no, you can document that different situations. And a lot of these behaviors, we can document for, and a lot of these other issues. different situations and a lot of these behaviors we can document for, and a lot of these other issues, uh, they weren't aware of. So.
So certain things you could document, you can get reimbursed for that you weren't before, that you didn't know about. Yeah.
We didn't know about.
That makes sense. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for, um, alright. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Peter, for all you and your team and all your work.
Thank you all.
Okay, we're moving on to solid waste now. I see George has a, an excellent purple sports jacket on.
Oh, nice.
Very impressed.
I think George is going to take, uh, the board through the majority of this and I'll go through the revenue projections and what is, um, going to be presented in the warrant and a ballot question, um, after George is done.
George, I think you might be, um, muted.
Thank you to everyone, to Brian, to the select board. And just a quick note that my sports jacket is purple up on the outside, but it's blue on the way into the camera. So just very quickly, uh, we've done a bit of, uh, editing to the goals and initiatives to try to capture the essence of our program a little better. Our mission is very straightforward, provide public service necessary to manage solid waste. So let's go on and look at the goals, uh, below. And number one is to maintain and improve our program, essentially receiving and managing some collection with the goal of stay safe, reliable, environmental sound, sustainable and cost effective in the sense we can with services and operations. Uh, as we do that, goal two, comply with regulatory standards and requirements. This is going on to the next level of safe environmental sound, but also complying with the hierarchy. We encourage waste reduction, reuse, recycling and composting and only disposition of that which has not been diverted or recycled, composted as residuals. Our goal three, uh, recognizes that, uh, much of the work in terms of operating the, uh, facilities on the island at one eighty Medicaid Row and is done by a contract operator, Waste Options Nantucket, under a Waste Services Agreement that expires November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, which frankly is right around the corner. So we're doing a lot of planning for transitioning and the goal is to have a seamless transition for an arrangement to succeed the existing arrangement. Goal four, uh, is an environmental monitoring program. I think, uh, the P F A S issue has emerged over the past year and there's been a lot of activity in that area. But anything that involves contaminants, there's a, uh, a strong landfill uh, monitoring program as well. And, uh, it's part of us, the solid waste department's responsibilities to ensure that the environment and stuff that there's a impact that we know what those are to address. And finally, our goal five is to achieve the goals and it's the straight out of the, uh, strategic plan using data-driven recommendation. Uh, and I think we've also cast the goals and achieved them into a new set of initiatives. So just keep on going and, uh, let me just run through these very briefly, uh, after the picture of the take it or leave it, uh, site, but keep going. And I think we have a picture, uh, uh, this is the recycling center. If you look at, uh, this particular pile, you see a huge pile of bags. One of the things we're working on is to get an automated bag opener to make this pile, uh, be able to be processed more efficiently and, uh, improve both separation at the recycling center and the ability to take material as the material increases. Keep going, please. Okay, initiatives, one, I think is the basics. Provide staff where it's needed, provide facilities and resources and equipment to the staff. Uh, but number two is also important since waste options or one is the contract operator. There's important count roll and monitoring of facility operations. There's a lot of coordination between operation of those facilities and the way material comes in either by delivery by residents and delivery by haulers and also the way material goes out and at the site. Uh, I think a couple of things coming up. The Mass Department of Environmental Protection has a a lot of regulations and policies, including most recently requirements to segregate mattresses and textiles from the waste stream, uh, which the town is taking measures to comply with and will continue to do, uh, going forward. Uh, I think waste reduction is something we could probably do better and, and, and look at more programs. It's challenging to do, given the nature of, uh, waste generation on the island, not only residents, but seasonal visitors and one-time visitors and tourists and occasional visitors. So getting the education out is a challenge. Likewise, to the extent there are new methods or requirements to collect waste and handle them, I think two are looking at, this is ongoing, is to find a way to recycle paper rather than compost it and to find a way to compost organics separately from what would be inorganic materials or amineous upon accept. And, uh, number of initiatives in that area. Working with waste options to optimize disposition of what's left over after waste production, reuse and recycling. Uh, that includes both strategic use of the last little bit of capacity at the landfill, which does not take solid waste, it only takes residual point. And what gets shipped to the mainland. And I should mention that, uh, we've seen substantial escalation of disposal rates at the mainland. And that's one of the challenges going forward. And finally, our going forward, capital projects and improvements at the solid waste facilities and looking at new technologies and new equipment that we might use in a variety of measure. And, uh, okay, if I look at, uh, and education is always a challenge, coordination with residents to generate. Uh, initiatives and goal three, keep going. Uh, I think this is, goes to the relationship with waste options uh, through twenty-twenty-five and whoever the contract operator would be after twenty-twenty-five, the select board has seen some kind of discussion of some of these items. There's an option for the town to purchase a composter, which waste option owns. There's a negotiation ongoing based on appraisal, whether to, and how to purchase the transfer station in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, ongoing in twenty-twenty-four will be a big year for that. Also, uh, in terms of some specifics of managing capital improvements, the MRF has a new roof. It was a, uh, process that maybe it was not as efficient as and quick as it might have been. So we're looking to improve speed of going through the capital improvement process, especially if the town's going to buy two more facilities that if the town will, uh, have to maintain. And, uh, finally, uh, moving forward with the procurement process for operations after twenty-twenty-five, going to be mean in our fee process of selection and agreements and moving forward on transition. And finally, uh, the D E P has deferred for now the closure of the base one online landfill. But that deferral, uh, can come up at any time. So the town is moving forward to understand what the requirements are. And perhaps, uh, if there are things that can be done to reduce the long-term costs in the short term, that have other benefits of the town to move forward with those actions, uh, within the next year. Initiatives for goal four. Uh, I think P F A S has gotten a lot of attention on this town. There's a, an island-wide assessment ongoing. Uh, there's always awaiting the, the action for environmental modeling of P F A S at the landfill, but we can't necessarily wait for D E P. We have to move forward sometimes in advance of standards to make sure that we, we're doing what we can to handle materials safely, correctly and to minimize, uh, impacts on residents. And finally, uh, the data collection. I think at this point, the department has a solid system in place for tracking deliveries of, I think it's about twenty-five categories of waste into one eighty Medicaid Row, understanding what the costs are associated with this, was with each waste stream. Uh, and then taking that and using that as the basis for the budget as well as for, uh, areas of focus in terms of improvement. Uh, I should say that, uh, post-COVID in, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, the town ended up, uh, handling seventy-eight thousand tons of waste at, uh, at the landfill. And that does not include, uh, things like refrigerators and scrap metal which come on under, which are tracked by item, rather than by ton. So it is really a very large task that the island, uh, has to manage and to report with solid waste. And, uh, we are tracking not only with, uh, not only the tons, but also the cost for each item. And that becomes the basis for the budgets that, uh, in the budget numbers you see. So if we can keep going, I think this is probably, I think I've mentioned this, I mentioned the management, just a brief overview, I'm not going to go through each category. Uh, we made progress, uh, for arrangements to succeed, uh, in the Waste Services Agreement. Uh, one highlight of the year, uh, Nantucket Garden Compost, which is made at the landfill, was actually certified as an O M R I listed product. So if you want to use organic comp- compost, you can get it here, made on Nantucket. And, uh, that's an important milestone for that program. Uh, and then the other thing we did this year, which we haven't done a number of years, was actually increased the, uh, rates for, uh, commercial C and D at the transfer station. Uh, the rates on the mainland where this material is sent have been literally skyrocketing. Uh, and so we've, uh, had to go through a series of procedures and this is ongoing as well. Uh, to have a process for making sure that the tip fees that are charged on the island match the costs to, uh, deliver it to the mainland for the handling and transportation. Okay, uh, next page, please. Uh, number of capital projects. And the group on the MRF mentioned that household has a disperse collection of, collection, collection events. And, uh, I think, and a lot of other details which we'll get to, uh, maybe. Uh, I think that's the quick overview of what the program looks like. And at this point, you're going to turn over to Brian, I'm not even talking about.
Thank you, uh, George, and thank you, Erica, for the slide. Um, no, put it over, scroll to that one. So the projected expenses, um, which town administration did work with, uh, George very closely in trying to come up with the a best guest scenario, or best, our best estimate of what the deliveries to the transfer station will look like. We're projecting fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars in total expenses. Now, can you scroll down a little bit, Erica? Perfect. So we're projecting this broken between two categories, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars for, uh, the enterprise fund payroll, which includes a solid waste manager, recycling coordinator, the three full-time take it or leave it employees and all any and all associated benefit costs related to the individuals in the employer of the enterprise fund. We're projecting fourteen million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars in operating expenses. The majority of this being, um, a little over thirteen million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand is related to professional services, which includes, um, any legal services. It includes all of the disposal contractual costs outlined in the waste service, the waste option service, waste service agreement for the operation of the MRF, C and D disposal and all of their hauling and disposal of the waste at the transfer station. The next largest line in that budget is utilities at three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So as I mentioned, the total, uh, recommended, uh, expense budget is fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. Broken down in a recommended funding source, the revenue, six million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars initially from the general fund transfers, which do include, um, some within the levy, some within the levy limit, excuse me, and then some, uh, previously approved, uh, to prop two and a half overrides. We're projecting four million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars worth of, um, revenue for user fees, um, at the, at the transfer, at the facility. Um, that's based on reviewing the last average of about the last four or five years of, um, tonnage and deliveries to the facility and then um, extrapolating that out based on what we think will happen versus the charges that we could charge at the facility. Um, I know when, excuse me, when the town manager presents the warrant, the enterprise fund for the, this would still leave a deficit of three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I think over the course, since we started the budget season and the budget projections, we have informed the board that we were intending to recommend an override. That override will be recommended at three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand to close that gap and move it forward on a, a go-forward basis. If we have to answer, excuse me, any questions that the board may have with this?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, George. Any questions or comments? On board?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess my question would be with a, with a three million dollar override necessary. Where are the opportunities to generate more revenue or where they're not available because of the current way we're operating with the contract with these options?
I'll do my best to initially answer this and I'm sure that George will help and fill in. I think under the way the current agreement is structured, it's very difficult for us to generate substantial new revenues, um, with the way that is structured. Um, I think, Mr. Chair, you were on the board, or you may not have been, but when we attempted to change the pricing of the Mew, the mixed excavation waste that went over the scale, um, when it first started to dramatically increase and we were losing, we were subsidizing a substantial amount of that expense for the disposal of it. Um, when we did raise it, we raised it from thirty to sixty, the, um, amount that was being delivered to waste options precipitously fell for a period of time, which brought, led us all back to sit around the table and trying to hash out an, an amendment to the agreement to, to solve that issue. So I think the way it's structured currently, um, I think there's very limited ways to generate substantial increases in that. Obviously with the change in the C and D rates that George mentioned, that will generate some additional revenue, but it's not going to, those small changes and incremental changes will not generate um, the changes necessary to, or the additional revenue to close the, the gap that we face.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, those are the two main programs. Uh, I think one thing we're looking into is there are given, there was a veritable explosion of, uh, excavation waste delivered in fiscal year twenty-two, thirty, over thirty thousand tons. In other years, it's been in the teens. So some of that was pent up demand during COVID. Uh, but it does raise the question of what can we do, uh, to encourage waste reduction so that less of that material is generated on the island? Or to pass the cost of that onto those, uh, who cause it to be created to the generators? We're looking into a couple of options. You may hear more going forward about, for example, a, uh, building permit surcharge on, uh, construction projects that involve substantial, uh, excavation of material that cannot be, uh, replaced on-site. It certainly would be an improvement to send a price signal to those where they're doing their plans and see if they can redesign or find a way to minimize that material, given, uh, the cost of the town of handling it once it has created. So that's one example, I think, waste uh, reduction in general may provide some opportunities for cost savings and expense reduction. Terms of revenues, not so much. Uh, and again, we did successfully raise the C and D rates on, uh, September, in September twenty-twenty-two, we'll do that at least once a year and look at what we can do to keep those rates in touch with what's going on in the landfill. It's a challenge and it's not going to solve the whole problem.
I, I think it's important for the community to understand, um, and I can't reiterate it enough that when it leaves here, it costs us a lot of money to get it there and it costs a lot, a lot of money for there to accept what we send them. And so, um, sometimes the out of sight, out of mind is, is lost on people, but it's an enormous expense for us to be moving our waste, um, elsewhere.
I would also add that elsewhere tends not to be Massachusetts at this point, it tends to be Ohio, Michigan, and sometimes South Carolina or Alabama. So anything we don't send to the, uh, to the mainland to get read up is, you know, avoiding a risk. And we've seen increases in tip fees at certain mainland disposal facilities that the town was relying on of forty to fifty percent within the last six months. So there is a crisis in solid waste management on the mainland and everything that the town ships to the mainland is caught up in that, uh, price, prices.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Brian. Any other comments? Malcolm, Don?
Okay, thank you. Um, is it okay if I, I, I just wanted to correct, um, something that when Malcolm asked about the debt. When I looked very quickly, I, the number that I gave you was actually the amount that is authorized and unissued, which means various town meetings have authorized that debt. But we have yet to issue it because the projects are either not completed, not started, or the timing is not right to bond for that money, or it may have some bands out for it. The actual amount of debt that the town currently has completely between enterprise funds and general fund is a hundred and eighty-six million. Okay, broken down, I'll give you the, uh, the top level breakdown. The general fund has a hundred and thirteen million dollars worth of that debt and seventy-three million dollars of that is allocated to the enterprise with forty-seven million dollars of that being in the sewer enterprise fund. So I wanted to make that correction because, um, it was, I, I looked at those numbers very quickly, so I wanted to get that back to you. it was, I, I looked at those numbers very quickly, so I wanted to get that back to you.
Good.
Proceed, okay. Other commitments, including attendance at the MMA annual conference prevented me from giving you a formal monthly town manager report, but I have a couple of verbal things to give you. I was invited to be a presenter at one of the MMA workshops. It related to succession planning and employee retention strategies, and I want to really thank the assistant town managers, Greg Tivnan and Rick Sears and our human resources director, Amanda Perry, for assisting me with the preparation of that presentation. I think it was pretty well received. Another interesting workshop at the conference that several of us attended related to underground wiring. And it was a kind of a case study about the town of Weston, who completed a multi-year project. I think they said it was six or seven years. It ended up costing their town around nineteen million dollars for one mile of underground wiring. And it, I, I would say it wasn't even quite as complicated as anything that we have here, but it was really interesting the way they discussed it. Some other current town admin activities include, I'm working to schedule a joint select board con con meeting that was discussed a couple of weeks ago. I'm working on several issues relating to the HTC, trying to get a meeting going with the chairs of the HTC Select Board, who select where will be the vice chair and the planning commission, plus the town manager, planning director and the preservation planner, so that we can discuss the citizen warrant article for a separate HTC administrator, an independent review of HTC operations and the status of that and the HTC advisory committees and that meeting. Meetings like that with people who have lots of different commitments, they're off island, they're here and there, take some time to schedule, but hopefully that'll get done very soon. Following that meeting, it is planned that the HTC advisory committees issue that board members have requested be on the agenda will be put on the agenda, hopefully within the next two or three weeks. We've spent a significant amount of time on the town meeting warrant, budgets, various projects, including downtown sidewalks and other transportation related projects. PFAS continues to take up an immense amount of time as well as long-term solid waste planning. You heard some of that tonight. The town report takes a massive amount of time that is compiled by Erica, our operations administrator, and she does a fantastic job with it, but it is a huge project. We have numerous personnel issues going on, including collective bargaining, filling various vacancies and we have a, a number of real estate related items that are, real estate specialists and I reviewed everything that is underway or active. And he gives me a two and a half page, single spaced document that has all the projects on it. I would say there are well over two dozen of them. So those are just some of the things we're working on. That, that's it for town management report. Do you want me to jump into the warrant?
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, so the warrant has had some developments. Yeah, please, since last week, and I'm going to try to take you through them, not, not a lot and some of them you know about. First off, I'm going to go to it. On my computer, Erica, I'm just going to look at, I'm going to start with, I want to bring them to article fifteen. So since last week, the articles have been numbered and as is always the case, is the, the second they get numbered, they start getting moved around. And so it's, you know, renumbering constantly. There've been some reordering, a little bit of reordering and a little bit of minor non-substantive wording changes that have come from plus for some various articles. Couple of zoning articles were removed. I'll show you those in a minute and a new zoning article was added. So I just wanted to point out article fifteen, is there still a comment there? Yeah. Last week, I think we had not a totally accurate description of what this project is. It is one new grass field and improvements to the other two grass fields. Just wanted to tell, tell you that. And then actually, yeah, where did I put the override? Oh, it's is that article eighteen? Yeah. Article eighteen is the override article for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that you've all discussed. So hopefully John Georgio is on because he and Brian and I have had some discussion about the number and whether or not the number should go in the article or in the finance committee motion. So it's really up to the board to determine that. If you put, my only concern was, and generally the finance committee and the select board are pretty much aligned on numbers like this. And I, I think we can leave it to the finance committee to put the number in the motion. But I sometimes like to double check with the board because sometimes the board is quite adamant about a particular number. And if you are, then it typically would go in the article, but I would like you to hear a little bit from town council about the number going in the article. And the number that we're talking about, I think, is somewhere between six and a half million and eight and a half million. And Brian can maybe speak to those num, the numbers that we've been discussing and how they would pan out in the budget. But in the meantime, John, are you?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so with respect to putting the number in the article, I think your general advice has been not to include it in the article, but to have it in the motion.
Correct.
Okay, because the other concern was, let's just play out a scenario. Pretend the number is in the article, but the FinCom chooses a different number, but now we have a ballot question that has to have a number in it and it gets a little awkward.
Right, so. So in that scenario, Libby, if the motion, let's just make something up here, if the motion by the finance committee or if there's a floor amendment, you know, changes the number to three million to be raised and appropriated, but the ballot question says six point five million. Under the rules that apply to overrides, the actual increase in the levy limit in the first year would only be three million, not the full six point five million. Because the override only applies to the amount that's actually appropriated in the first year. So that would be something, there's really no way around that. Because even if you included the number in the article, someone could always make a motion at town meeting to amend to reduce the amount. And so it would be the reduced amount as approved by town meeting that would represent the permanent increase in the levy limit for that purpose.
Thank you, John. Brooke, you have a question?
Through you, Mr. Chair, John. Town meeting cannot increase.
Well.
Well, if it's in, what happens if it's, can it be increased? And if it is increased, what happens?
So if the warrant article said six point five million and someone stood up to make an amon, an amendment to increase that, let's just say by two million dollars, that would be a judgment for the moderator to make, whether or not that increase of two million, which would be maybe thirty, thirty percent or so is within the scope. And that seems like an awfully large number to increase to in, to increase this appropriation by. But let's assume someone passes a motion for eight point five million. But your override question is only six point five million, then the increase in your levy limit would be limited to six point five million. And you would have to raise the additional two million within your levy limit.
John, John, that's two different scenarios. So in the first one, it, it goes with whatever happens at annual town meeting in the warrant article that overrides anything that happens at the ballot if it's under.
Yes.
And then if it's over. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, if it's under the amount in the ballot question, then the, then you're in, the increasing, the permanent increase in your levy limit is the number appropriated at town meeting. If it's over the amount stated in the ballot question, you can still raise and appropriate that amount. But the entire amount will not be over and above your levy limit. You would have to raise that within your levy limit. And then that would potentially create a problem for the town when it went to get its tax rate certified.
Thank you, John. And then if, if it, this is the same, even if it's in a FinCom motion? Same whether we put it in or not?
Okay, yes.
So before we leave here tonight, we need to know if, what the number is and if it's going in the article or are we going to leave it to the FinCom motion?
I think Brian was going to walk through the, the number and I think, but you, you have something else before that, Brooke?
Just as, as a procedural question, if this board doesn't identify a number to put in the motion, what is the process by which our what we, what, if we agree on something that gets communicated to FinCom?
Can I just say, you, you won't be voting on a number for the motion. You would, if anything, you'd vote on a number in the article. And, and the FinCom will always vote on a number in the motion. Typically, the FinCom will ask the board, what number are you recommending?
Okay.
So that's another way to do this.
So if we don't, if we don't put it in the article, the, the, the process is that the finance committee would ask the select board, what's, what's the number that we recommend to them?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Through Brian. And I, but I think we, we would need the number tonight, Libby, correct me if I'm wrong, because we need to have it in the ballot, right?
Yes, we need a number for the ballot question.
So whether we put it in article eighteen or not, we still would need us to settle on that number. Town administration has recommended six and a half million. It's the override number. Excuse me. And we did discuss, as we kind of took you through last week, a, a format where six and a half million would be the base. Wouldn't anticipate that it would ever go lower than that, which would be the transfer on an annualized basis. We have talked about being able to take the citizens warrant article of sixty seven percent and using that as the basis to calculate what that would look like at the end of every fiscal year. So at the end of June thirtieth of twenty three, we take sixty seven percent of the total room occupancy back out what the, if the override were to pass, what that is. And then that delta would be the number that we would discuss being able to put in the budget to get to the sixty seven percent of what the prior year's room occupancy taxes. I think this is a, a little bit better way to do this because it would give the Affordable Housing Trust, like I said last week and at the FinCom meeting, a much more stable platform from which to operate. It would give town administration a much a better ability to properly budget on an, on a go forward basis. And if circumstances changed on a year to year basis, we would only be looking for whatever that delta was between the potential sixty seven percent and of what the room occupancy total was, understanding that it would never go lower than the six and a half million. But I think that this accomplishes the one thing that I think I took away from FinCom is, is there a middle ground that gets to where everybody wants to try to go? And from where I'm standing and my discussions with town administration, I think this gets kind of meets what FinCom asked everybody to is to put their heads together and try and come up with a solution that doesn't create extreme stress on the general fund budget, but accomplishes the very laudable goals of trying to continue the work that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has done. So that's the framework. And I mean, I, I've had, certainly have had some conversations with Brooke about it. With, you know, the understanding that the goal is to get to the sixty seven percent, but every year we would have to sit down and go through what the initiatives are, what the circumstances are and have a a discussion about how to get there. But it's would be my opinion that this would be the way to, to fund this on a go forward basis.
Libby, did you have something about your?
Um, no, I was just going to say, I hope it would be safe to not put a number in the article and to let that number be in the FinCom motion and that it would be the same number as in the ballot question, which would be I think our recommendation, six point five million.
Yes, that's correct.
So I like this as a compromise solution. I think I'd like to articulate to my fellow board members and, and to the community, the, the laudable goal of the stabilization fund proposal in the citizens warrant article is, is great. I mean, I've been advocating for substantial and predictable funding for affordable housing for as long as I've been in that game. And I, I'm thrilled that we're at this place in twenty twenty three. In the five years or six years since I've been working on housing, the, the, this conversation has changed dramatically. I just want to point out that the stabilization fund as a mechanism for funding affordable housing has some drawbacks that I'd like to articulate. That, first of all, the article proposes that it not even go into effect for another fiscal year. And then we can't spend dollar one until the following fiscal year, and it requires a two thirds vote at town meeting each year to get the money out. So as a mechanism for funding what the Affordable Housing Trust is trying to achieve and the many initiatives that we have slated that just need funding. That's a two year delay and it's, it's kind of a clunky mechanism for funding. So the idea of a consistent and reliable source of funding through the override is, is going to be a game changer for the work that's being done in the community and our, and our ability to move forward more rental opportunities and, and really move into the homeownership opportunities for people at the attainable levels of housing, which is defined as over a hundred percent AMI and up to two hundred and forty percent AMI. And that is a segment of the market we haven't been able to address at all. And so I very, very firmly support the proposal that town administration has put forward, and I hope my fellow board members will as well.
No.
I think she said it well.
John, you have a hand up?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I have been in discussions with, with Brian and also with bond counsel. And one option that the town would have with, with the wording of this article as it stands would be not only to raise and appropriate six and a half million dollars contingent on an override, but you could also authorize a borrowing that would, would be contingent on the override of an amount that that the six point five million dollars would support in terms of paying the debt service. And so that would be a mechanism whereby you could jumpstart some projects by having additional funding available earlier than just doing six and a half million dollars a year. And, and the motion would allow you, for example, let's just say you have, you want to do a twenty million dollar project in the first year, you would be able to borrow that money and still have the six and a half million coming in each year to pay the debt service. So that's an option the board and the finance committee would have. Should you want, as I said, to jump, jumpstart some projects? And I believe Brian has indicated that that amount could potentially be as high as fifty million dollars in terms of a bond authorization. And we, I talked to bond counsel this afternoon and he did not have an issue with making both the appropriation and the bond authorization contingent on the passage of the override. I hope that makes sense.
It does. Any questions for John on that? Dawn, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say I support the recommendation.
Thank you, Dawn. We go to Rick Atherton.
Thank you, Jason. Are you there?
Yes.
I, I assume you can hear me.
Yes.
You know, I've always been. Yes. All right. I, I assume you can hear me. So let's talk. So let's start. Let's try again, Jason.
Yep, go ahead.
Jason, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, doesn't work. Okay.
You'll do the same thing again.
Uh, Jason, sorry for that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? You can go ahead. Okay, we take him off just for a second. We figures that out. We'll go to John. He had his hand back up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was one. Uh, there was one issue that I wanted to point out with regard to the, well, with well, with regard to the Affordable Housing Trust article. And to be honest with you, for the life of me, I've had a brain freeze. So why don't you go on and I'll remember what I wanted to mention.
Okay, well, we'll go back to Rick and try try over there.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that.
Jason, thank you. Sorry about the uh, audio down here. You know, I've always felt that the town's first responsibility is for town employees. And I'm very reluctant to have an override, which is goes on forever until that issue is resolved. I would much prefer you had, especially since there's been active conversation about leveraging the override. So six billion dollars a year is worth fifty million today. And then it goes on until those questions are resolved. Conditions are gonna change fifteen years from now. We may not need this kind of annual contribution. And I think we're much better off if really the Affordable Housing Trust wants twenty million this year or fifty million as a debt override to vote that way rather than continuing override, which lasts forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Mr. Chairman, I
John, yep.
And and Rick actually addressed the issue that I wanted to point out to the board. One question might be, well, why wouldn't you just make this contingent on a debt exclusion, the fifty million dollar borrowing, rather than the override? And the reason for that is, I believe it's that administration's recommendation that you do a permanent increase in the levy limit. So even beyond the point where you have paid off the initial debt service, you would still have the six and a half million dollars a year that you could dedicate to affordable housing. And it wouldn't be a temporary increase. It would be a permanent increase. And of course, in the future, should you decide that you no longer need those override dollars for affordable housing, you would have two options. You could vote an underwrite to reduce the levy limit by six and a half million dollars. Or you could protect, you could, after the first year, use that revenue for other purposes in the budget.
Thank you, John.
I would point out, though, Mr. Chair, that town administration's commitment for this was that if it was going to be for for if it was passed in and as the first year is the only year it's absolutely dedicated to that, we would do what we've done, consisting with Ireland Home and in solid waste. So which has removed that from the calculation for the rest of the budgetary initiatives and and funding. So in the event, in future years, it wasn't needed. As John very aptly pointed out, we could certainly advance an underwrite, or we would simply just not appropriate those monies, and it would sit as unused levy capacity until if it was necessary in future for affordable housing or until an underwrite question was put on the ballot. So.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with override, because I don't see our housing challenges going away in the next two two decades. But there are options if it if we don't. If there was something else that I that wasn't the top three things in our strategic plan, then maybe I would reconsider the override.
If I may respond to the comment about town employees, the goal of creating an adequate supply of deed restricted housing to people making up to two hundred and forty percent area median income is creating housing for town employees and without the town owning and managing housing. And so the goal of the Affordable Housing Trust is to expand the inventory of housing available to people who live and work here, and that includes town employees. And I have to say, I've heard some remarks from town employees that the use of the phrase company town came up in a conversation recently about housing. And I just want to remind everybody of the old mining towns and the railroad towns where the employer owned the housing and people's lives were locked into their employer because they were employer based housing. And as a model for us to resolve housing, employer owned housing, including town, as an employer owned housing, is not an effective solution, long term and sustainable solution for the community. It is about creating enough of of an appropriate ratio of housing that is restricted to those of us who live here and housing that's available to those who visit here. And this kind of investment will allow us to move much faster toward that goal. So town employees have access to housing across this across the market. So.
Brooke, isn't there programs in certain situations that have town preference that that legally can be done through DHCD or?
Yes, there is a municipal municipal employee preference in the DHCD allocation. And that has been be going to be included in the RFPs for the properties that we own at Orange Street, Bartlett Road, Amelia Drive, and probably everything we do in developing will will do will take advantage of the local resident preference and the municipal employee preferences.
Thank you. John, you have your hand up still, or is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'm good.
Anything from you, Dawn? You good? Good.
Okay, so it sounds like we are at six and a half, not but not in the article, but in the ballot question, which we're gonna still get to in a minute. So Erica, I think go to Article forty seven. This is some, I just think we want to point out some zoning article changes. Article forty seven, I think, is just been revised. So the old one is stricken and the new one is now. Did you already? Yeah, is that that's new in there? Well, anyway, that's the new one. And the other one is stricken. And there were two, if you go down to the net after the new forty seven, I think. There's a couple of zoning articles that are stricken that are are not going to be necessary. And then where's the new one that Leslie gave us? And if Leslie is on, could she maybe just quickly summarize it? I just don't remember the number.
Erica, I think you've gone too far. You guys were way back in the warrant, and then you just suddenly got into zoning.
Do you remember which which two?
Right before Article forty.
Forty, thanks.
Oh, yeah. It's about.
Right before that one. Yeah. So this is a new article. This isn't something that we were expecting to submit. It's about amending our time share or time interval ownership dwelling unit definition. We would add fractional ownership to this. We've had a potential enforcement situation come up, and we've realized that our zoning by law is not as clear as it should be. And we think this is something that's important. It's time sensitive. It won't deal with the current issue, but it would head off in future issues. So we would like for you all to put this in. I know it's late breaking, but it was unexpected.
Any questions on that? Good.
Next, I don't think there was, I don't think there was anything else new. The all, there was an article removed in down in real estate, which related to Baxter Road. It was belatedly discovered, thank you, Andrew Vorse, that we actually already have the authorization to dispose of discontinued areas of the roadway once we get there. So that article was removed. Couple minor changes to some of the home rule petition, real estate, map and parcels that weren't correct, and now they are. Erica, just sidebar, did you, are we gonna take out those map reference things that? Reference the.
I don't know. We haven't heard back from planning about that. And they actually asked me to add a few more in.
Okay, Leslie, we'll talk to you tomorrow about taking out the references and articles that specifically have article numbers in them. Remember that email?
I do, and I don't have an issue with that. I just need to make sure that there's not a legal issue with the map not being referenced the way that we've been referencing it. So as long as John Giorgio says it's okay, but it's okay with us.
He he said it was okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can we go back to the fertilizer article?
Yes.
Hold on, it's.
We just went, it's so in the home rule protection petition section. Yes, there it is. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to address the comments that were made during the public comment period.
Sure.
As we know, last year, there was a citizens petition, which would essentially, except for limited circumstances, ban the application of fertilizers on the island. And the petitioner from last year requested that you indicate to your state rep and senator that you would, you want them to refile that bill on your behalf. And the question he raised was, why is Article eighty five in the warrant? And this was a motion that the finance committee had made last year. And it is, it it is intended, rather than banning fertilizer altogether, to allow the town an additional two years to develop fertilizer regulations because the State Fertilizer Act basically closed that window. I believe it was ultimately in two thousand and fourteen. So my response to that is, I would recommend that you keep Article eighty five in the warrant and that you ask the finance committee to make a positive motion. This article is basically a Plan B article. You know, if last year's home rule petition passes and there's a ban on fertilizer, then Article eighty five would not be necessary. But if that is not passed, this is a backup plan that would provide a alternative for the general court to consider rather than an outright ban on fertilizer. I hope that explains the rationale.
Thank you, John. Malcolm?
Well, that goes back to I don't, I don't see why we cannot ask for that warrant to be presented again to the state legislature. This is, this one is backup. They can both go in. It gives them an opportunity. My concern of not of just relying on eighty five is words similar were defeated last year, and the other warrant was passed overwhelmingly. So certainly, the majority of the island's citizens are in favor of that article. It was passed overwhelmingly, and I think we should ask our legislatures to bring it up again. We don't have to take eighty five out.
Brooke?
Through you to John Giorgio. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I remember there being some concern that the ban might not be considered legal by the AG's office under current Massachusetts regulations and law. Is that?
Well, not exactly, not exactly, Brooke. The reason why it was done as a home rule petition is is because, under current law, if the town were to enact a bylaw banning fertilizer, that would not be approved by the by the Attorney General, because it would be inconsistent with the State Fertilizer Act. But the article last year proposed a special act through the home rule petition process that would essentially supersede the State Fertilizer Act. So the legislature has the power to approve the home rule petition from last year. Whether it will do so is an open question.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Joe Jivety, anything? You have to come to the mic if you want, if you want. This will give you the opportunity to.
So it seems to me that you guys are going to ask Senator Seer and Dylan, Representative Fernandez, to refile. It's S dot three one zero one, which is been in the state, the State House, and it's been going through. It didn't get through in the last session. It needs to be refiled so it can get talked about in the session that is going for like the year twenty twenty three.
It seems that Malcolm's a yes, Brooke is a yes.
I'd make a formal motion.
Sure.
That we refile.
Yep.
I'm a yes.
You want a second of that?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor? A roll call. Brooke?
I.
Malcolm?
I.
Dawn?
I.
Jason, I. So there you go.
Thank you very guys. Thank you guys very much. I really appreciate it.
And then Article eighty five is is a backup. Thank you for bringing that up, John. And and thank you, Joe. Uh, we go to Rick Atherton. Let's hope Brooke's got the audio all fit, all ready to go. Oh, take his hand down. Hand back up.
Jason, thank you. Just to be clear, if you're gonna put back in the article that was approved at town meeting for the fertilizer ban, I would think you'd eliminate the current draft Article eighty five. So town meeting would be asked to be clear on reaffirming the article approved last year. It wasn't quite quite clear to me that's where you're headed. So I'd like that to be clarified. Thank you.
It's my understanding that the town per se does not have to recertify that article. It's a select board. We can just ask the legislature to look at it again. To me, eighty five is a backup. And interesting, eighty five was a similar article last year was defeated, but the the one that did not get to the full legislature was passed overwhelmingly. So I don't see any problem of leaving eighty five in. Because it may get defeated.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I I have a doubt in my mind about the advice that the state rep and the state senator are providing. This is a new legislative session, and you know, there are a number of reauthorization of home rule petitions on this warrant. And I would hate for the board to finalize and close this warrant if we find out that in fact, they're gonna require a new home rule petition in order to reauthorize the article from last year. So my suggestion would be that the board take a motion that would authorize the town manager to include the article from last year in the warrant after we consult with the town's representatives in the general court, whether they want a new town meeting vote or not.
Okay. And if they do, then it would go in, and we would have to bring it back here, because this is our last.
Exactly. And if they say no, it's not necessary. We just need the Board of Selectmen to affirm. Or request the filing, then we can send a letter to that effect. So my, my suggestion would be a motion. That. Authorizes the town man, the uh, so, the select board to. Request that it be refiled. And if. A town meeting vote is required, that the town manager add that article. Tomorrow, basically, into the warrant, which would be the exact same article that passed a town meeting last year.
Okay, so you're just adding on a couple little things to Malcolm's motion.
Yes. And to keep Article eighty five.
Yep. Are you okay with that motion? You want to?
I'm fine with that. It's just. Seems every time we talk to lawyers, we get multiple opinions, but fine, I'm fine with that.
I think this is a backup in case because I think that the housing bill, we've had to bring back every single year, right? Is that different?
Interestingly, we were advised we didn't need to bring it back this year to town meeting. So I think, I think really it's what town council suggesting is. To confirm with our representatives in Boston that it's not needed so that it can move forward appropriately. Because it would be disappointing if a reauthorization was required and then it, town meeting hadn't had the opportunity to do that.
Right. If we had, if we had three more weeks, we wouldn't have to make this motion.
Right.
That's fine.
So it's a contingent motion, right?
Yes, contingent motion. It's, it's a backup of a backup.
And it's, it's not a multiple opinion by council. It's trying to protect the town's interests. Um, to achieve the goal here.
Okay, so someone want to make that motion? Can you remember what John said?
Yes, so that um, I move that we authorize the town managers to include the um, the fertilizer ban article from last year. Um, as a reauthorization at town meeting. If our legislative um, representatives. Tell us it's required.
Wow. And if, and Mr. Chair, and if not, that the select board send a letter requesting. That it be reauthorized.
Yeah, we've already, we've already made that motion. That motion already happened. We already said that. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, all those favorite roll call. Brooke? Yeah.
I.
Malcolm?
I.
Don?
I.
Jason, I. Okay, thank you, John. Nice backup plan.
And suspenders.
Yeah.
Ballot questions? Number six. So. Okay, so that number there is a little bit outdated. It, it's changing to six point five. And I think, I think we've basically confirmed this at this point. I just wanted to get your agreement. So I think we're agreed on that. So those are. Both, I think, good as is.
Do you need a motion, Libby, or just, are you, we all fine with?
I think ultimately, I'm, we're going to need a motion on this entire document.
So do it then.
Those are the only, I think those are the only outstanding things that I had unless town council or Brian or Leslie or Erica has anything else. I think we're good.
Um. I have one question, Mr., Mr. Chair. Um, and this is directed to Libby. Um, I noticed in the Norbitir Farm. Borrowing article, you have a note that. It involves, I believe it's one new field and two refurbished fields. Um, but your ballot question matches the article. I just wanted to confirm that. I believe it does.
I believe it does too, but we'll do a, a final check on that.
Do a double check on that because the ballot question and the warrant article need to match. It has to be the same project.
Yeah.
Are we ready for a? To adopt? Uh, and John, when we adopt this, do we need to, in the motion, add all the things we've talked about, the? Ballot question is six point five for the housing override? As discussed? Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I have just a clarification about what we're adopting? All the warrants, uh. While the election's out. So, okay.
It's a town meeting and election warrant that you're adopting for May sixth, twenty twenty three, annual town meeting. And.
Right, so we're, we're, we're not endorsing or, or any particular warrant or against it.
Nope.
Good.
So I, I would make a motion that we adopt the warrant subject to the discussions tonight and the changes um, that would result. For the. Help me say that again. For the May sixth, twenty twenty three annual town meeting and the May fourteenth town election.
May twenty third, sorry, May twenty third town election.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Give Don a second. Any discussion, Don? On the motion?
No, I'm, I'm off hash.
Mr. Chair, that. Mr. Chair, that requires a two thirds vote. Because it includes ballot questions, uh, debt excluding questions.
Yes, two thirds of select board members.
Yes, so you need to, it needs to be all four of you tonight for this to be adopted.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor by roll call. Brooke?
I.
Malcolm?
I.
Don?
I.
Jason, I. There you go. That motion passes.
Please don't contact Erica tomorrow. She's working on this.
Thank you, Libby. Thank you, Erica, and everyone else who's putting all this together. Everybody in plus as well. Okay, any committee reports or? Any comments? Don? Your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Brooke?
I.
Malcolm?
I.
Don?
I.
Jason, I. Thanks, everyone.
I forgot to resign. Next meeting. Next week.